It's 5:30. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. Have commissioners reviewed the agenda?
Yes.
And we do have some extra items that have been put on a revised agenda. We've got Item J, consider authorizing selling 921 West Myrtle to Hometown Healthcare. And Item K, consider an agreement with Mercy regarding demolition of portions of property donated at 800 West Myrtle. So we'll go by those additions. And I'd like to remove Item E from the consent agenda down to Items for Action. It relates to Item H on the agenda. So, any other additions? Modifications?
The commission will approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. So, next, a public hearing to consider condemnation of 612 East Magnolia as dangerous-
We gotta do the-
Did you pass the consent agenda?
We gotta approve what's left of the consent agenda. We moved Item E off.
Yeah, we moved Item E down to Items for Commission Action. We approved the consent agenda.
You just adopted the agenda, is what you're doing now?
Oh, okay. You're right. Okay. First, citizen concerns and petitions. Do we have any of those? Now, adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll move we adopt Items A, B, C, and D of the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor of adoption of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Now, Item F, public hearing to consider condemnation of 612 East Magnolia as a dangerous and unsafe structure. Jim?
Okay, on October 26th of last year, it was involved in a structure fire with significant damage. I have been in contact with the property owner the day after, and I spoke with her last Wednesday. She indicated that they did not carry insurance on it. However, it was on a contract for deed, and the current residents had no insurance on it as well. I know it's hard to tell by these pictures, but there is significant damage, especially on the back part of the house where the roof has collapsed. You know, at this point, it's too far gone to save.
Is the property owner present?
I don't see her.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to express opinion or interest? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Commissioner, discussion? Commissioner?
I drove by. Didn't look like there was anything to save there to me. It looked like we should bring it down as fast as we can.
Commissioner Meyer?
I'd agree. Just from looking at the pictures, I didn't drive by it.
Now, I believe in cases that it's deemed that there is a chance of collapse or bodily injury to the public or anyone in the neighborhood, that we can proceed quicker than the standard method of condemnation. What's the commissioner's desire?
I'm okay with that if it's-
Yeah, me too.
-dangerous and unsafe. I mean, there's, for lack of a term, Jeff, there's like an emergency process, correct?
The phrase imminent danger to the public?
Yeah. That's the thing. So, technically, that would be our motion, correct?
Yes.
But there's no way to secure it now, is there, Jim?
No, sir.
And it's not secured?
No, sir.
And hasn't been secured?
Since the night of the fire. No, sir.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
The wording-
Might I suggest a motion to you?
What's that?
Would you like me to suggest a motion on the wording for that? I recommend that you adopt a resolution condemning the property as dangerous and unsafe as an imminent danger to the public for immediate removal.
I'd be good with that motion.
I'll second.
Adding that last part makes it quick.
For immediate removal?
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution condemning 612 East Magnolia as dangerous, unsafe, and an imminent danger to the public for immediate removal.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item E, consider authorizing assessing a nuisance tax on 825 South Park Boulevard relating to condemnation proceedings. The owner removed the structure, and this nuisance tax then is relating to the title search, postage, publication of the newspaper. We've had others that have gone to this point, too, that the owner has removed the property. Have we, I don't remember seeing this nuisance tax being applied to them.
We have unless it's a property that we had fire insurance proceeds. So there have been some properties that we did not assess a nuisance tax because we were holding those proceeds, and what we do is reduce the funds that we release to them by the costs that the city incurred in the condemnation process. So, if we have funds in, that we've held in reserve, for example, when there's a fire, if there's insurance, the insurance company pays us 15% of those proceeds, which we hold until the property has been completed to the city's satisfaction. And then when we release those funds, we have payment. Otherwise, every time we take an item off of the condemnation list, I do go through and come up with the charges, and we have an ordinance that's passed before we remove it from the condemnation process.
Okay.
So that's a consistent process?
It is.
I don't remember seeing that before, and I know this house was a little different because I think we had actually started asbestos testing, Jim, and then I think you had confirmed that a homeowner can remove their own property without proceeding with the test. So the city's absorbing the money spent on the asbestos testing?
It could be assessed back onto that property.
Right. But in this case?
That has, I have done no asbestos-
Okay.
... surveys on that yet.
Okay. Okay, I think that was the question I had. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we adopt, let me get the right, adopt an ordinance assessing the nuisance tax. Where's the amount? $239.99, correct?
Mm-hmm.
An amount of $239.99 at 825 South Park.
I'll second.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance assessing nuisance tax of $239.99 on 825 South Park.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next, Item G, consider a request from a citizen to address cars racing down 12th Street from the stop sign at Beach and Pecan.
We were approached by a citizen who lives at the corner of Riley and 12th Street, also owns the property that goes on down and makes the curve there at Pecan, and continually, especially after school, with kids racing down the street, or in the evening times, other cars are driving into his property, missing the curb, putting ruts into his property. He spent a considerable amount of money fixing that property up, seating it, trying to make it nice. I think he even mows a little extra in that area, taking care of the property in the area, trying to take care of his neighborhood. Approached the city, spoke to Mike Pastor and myself, visited with him, also Mark Bining from the police department's been involved in this. And our recommendation is, as we stated there, to place, lost my train of thought.
Guard rail?
Guard rail, yeah, I was wanting to say barricade. Guard rail there on Pecan Street with proper signage showing that it is basically a 90-degree turn there. Also, on the guard rail, we would have reflective stripes so that the motorists could see that. Also, the police department has increased enforcement in the area and is watching the area. Citizen is present. I don't know that he necessarily wants to talk, but he may want to. Also, talking about kids and other vehicles that race down Riley Street, too. So, just have an issue that the police department would be enforcing in that area. But our recommendation is to proceed with that in that area.
Have you looked at Chevron road signs to provide a visual barrier instead of the guard rail? If the guard rail is anchored, then there could be liability if somebody does hit it of bodily injury, that it seems like a vision barrier would be safer and maybe do the same thing. It's not going to stop the car, of course, but maybe the vision part might be handled with some Chevron signage instead of a guard rail, that, you know, hitting that at a, if they are traveling at a high rate of speed, that could cause bodily injury, that maybe the signage with three or four Chevron signs would indicate that the road doesn't go on and accomplish the same thing.
Can you explain to me what a Chevron sign is? It's a-
It's a placard that's got stripes, reflective stripes at an angle. Any comments on that?
Oh, I think the owner, it's not only people racing, but we have people that like to cut across that field and just make a shortcut of it to get over to the other side that I think also like to go out into that field and do donuts and other obstacles and discussing that with him. So I think, you know, that is why we went with this option, and, you know, considering the reflective, putting the reflective on the, to make sure it is visible, and increasing the enforcement. I think that's the number-one issue.
Yeah.
Once the kids are aware that the officers are sitting there and weren't enforcing it, I think the issue is going to decrease quite a bit. But we have people that are cutting across the yard, too.
What about the concern that somebody hits it at 40 miles an hour and is injured?
Well, I mean-
Do we have liability?
That'd be a question for Jeff. People hit, I can tell you from the EMS, people hit guard rails all the time. Guard rails come into cars, go through windshields, out on the highways. You know, that's a part of accidents and wrecks. I see it quite often. I see stop signs that break off and come through windshields. I mean, it's, those issues do happen, yes.
My concern with the barrier is that it is solid and increase the accident or potential injury in an accident that, you know, I think the signage or, you know, some other barrier to indicate, but would actually-
Mr. Mayor, the citizen that made your request would like to speak.
Sure, that's fine.
If you can get a, if you can get a look at that northeast corner of that house right there, that's my house, okay? Those tracks, you know, we look, we sleep right there in that bedroom. We weren't in there this afternoon, you know? But, you know, if, we'll try anything you guys want to, you know, that's fine with me. But, you know, if this is going, I mean, I don't care if they hurt themselves. I've seen cars turn over down there.
Wow.
I've seen cars turn over at-
So it's a hazard anyway, is what you're saying?
Pardon me?
It's a hazard anyway.
Yeah, it's a hazard anyway. And he's seen it, and Mike's seen it, but when they, this last deal, they must have dug out four inches of dirt when they went through there. So, you know, if they get hurt, I don't care if they get hurt.
I appreciate that.
They shouldn't be driving that way.
Right. And you're saying your house is at risk, too, from a-
Pardon me?
You're saying that your house is at risk from a car hitting it?
Well, I mean, take a look at those tracks.
I see it, yeah.
You know? What do you think?
Is it coming from, they're going west on Pecan, or they're going south on 12th?
No, they're going south on, those tracks toward the corner of my house are going south on 12th and missed that turn, missed the fire hydrant by, what, three foot, maybe four foot, you know? Had my wife's car been in the driveway, I don't know what would have happened there. They went on around and circled out the driveway. She was gone at the time, you know? They did manage to get out and get gone. I didn't get no tag numbers or nothing, you know? But, you know, John Coshen, I don't notice this as much as John Coshen, but they'll also come east on Pecan Street, north on 12th Street, west on Riley Street at a pretty good rate of speed, too fast for a residential area.
Sure.
You know? We need something. They got a pretty good shot from 10th Street to 12th Street to get their old buzzers going and make around that corner and get them going again, and go around the corner west on Pecan Street, you know?
And you're okay with our staff's recommendation?
Pardon me?
You're okay with the recommendation made by our staff?
Yeah, yeah. And if it don't work, maybe we'll figure out something else. What do you say about that?
Worth a shot. Got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good start.
Okay.
You know?
Thank you, sir.
So the guard rail recommendation is-
Pardon me?
The guard rail recommendation is-
Oh, I think the guard rail recommendation's perfect. The other that she was talking about, I don't particularly think that much of it, but it really doesn't matter to me. You know, whatever will get their attention. It's not that bad, but, you know, when, when one of them runs over one of my little great-grandkids out there, you guys aren't going to have to worry about it, I guarantee you. You won't have to worry about it, whether he's hurt or not. But-
So your main problem is them coming south on 12th?
That's the main problem, yes.
Yeah. That field could be pretty inviting with a four-wheel drive.
Whatever you guys could get done for me, I appreciate it. All right? Thanks for your time.
What was your name?
Pardon me?
What was your name?
Larry.
Thank you.
I'm good with the recommendation, I think. Obviously, looking at those tracks, pretty close.
Yeah, I'm okay with the recommendations of our staff.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation for a guard rail on 12th Street, 12th and Riley, basically, as presented in the plan.
Along with their other recommendations?
Yes, along with the other recommendations. Increased patrols and everything that was in there.
Yeah, the warning signs.
Yeah, warning signs, all that stuff.
I'll second that. I'm sure Jen got all that.
Did you get it all, Jen? Want to read it back?
Yeah, just a minute. I have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation as presented, including signage, a guard rail, and increased patrol.
All in favor? Does that sound pretty much?
Good, yeah.
Good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, Item H, consider rescinding condemnation action for the structure at 825 South Park Boulevard. That structure's already been removed. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we rescind the condemnation action for the structure at 825 South Park Boulevard.
Second.
Okay. Jen, would you read the motion back, please?
I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution rescinding condemnation action for the property located at 825 South Park.
Perfect.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item I, consider reviewing the condition of the previously condemned structures. Jim, the first, 200 South 9?
Okay, on January 14th of this year, I did speak with the property owner, asked for her intentions. If you remember, back in October, she was given 60 days for the title declared so that she could remove the home. Now her plans are to sell it. However, my initial recommendation to the City Commission was to allow city staff to set the date for removal. However, on Tuesday, I did speak with a firefighter who has made an offer on the home, and I believe he was supposed to sign papers today. So at this point, I would like to table action for 30 days and give this, give this person a chance to purchase the home.
Okay. Will 30 days be enough, do you think?
I mean, we can bring it in, bring it in in 30 days. If he still is working on title search and that kind of thing, we could postpone an additional 30.
Yeah, if, if it's still going on in 30 days, but it's progressing, can we just postpone bringing it back and wait and see? Just so it doesn't occupy time?
Only bring it back if we need it, if we need to.
Do you want to just do the, you know, 45, 60 days or something to make sure that-
Something, right.
Just so that there's a target, so to speak?
Yeah. You know, I think 60 would be-
Yeah, I'm okay with either one of them.
60 days?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Is that good?
Yeah.
So we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, we should have a motion on that if you want to make it.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we delay the date for removal and let process work out for potential purchase, getting that in, for a 60-day period.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Jen, would you read the motion back to us, please?
I have a motion and a second to delay setting a date for removal and allow the process for potential purchase to work out over the next 60 days.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. 812 West Cottonwood?
Okay, here again, on the 14th of this month, I spoke with the property owner. His initial statement was that his son had come and looked at the house and felt it was too far in disrepair to repair it and get it back in to a normal state of living. The property owner inquired of approximately how much it would cost to remove. From seeing other bids of other homes of that approximate size, I expressed about $3,500 to $4,000. His reply to that was, with that kind of money, I could have it looking like a brand-new penny. That's just not the case. It's, there's, it's too far gone. He was at the public hearing. He's been given 30 days to commence repair or removal, and as you can tell by the pictures from the public hearing versus the pictures I took the other day, absolutely nothing has taken place. So I think at this time, rather than keep dragging it out over and over again, recommendation to the City Commission is allow city staff to set the date to receive bids for removal.
To me, it looked like one that you could spend $50,000 on and have a $40,000 house when you're done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I can't see anybody-
From Sapperton, yeah.
I know you're the architect, maybe you feel differently, but to me, there's not much there to say for what you'd have to invest.
I think I'd feel different if there was a plan at that time that he-
Yeah, and no timeline has been provided, either.
But, you know, based upon being able to do it for $3,500 and no timeline.
I think we'll proceed.
I think. I'll entertain a motion for 812 West Cottonwood.
I'd make a motion that we set a date for removal of the property at 812 West Cottonwood.
That the authorized staff could-
Authorized, yeah, staff.
Second.
For removal.
I have a motion and a second to authorize city staff to set the date for removal for 812 West Cottonwood.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. 821 East Maple.
Okay, and I met with the property owner on the 12th of this month at the house. Work has, has improved. He's, he has improved the back room, if you will. His wife's had a lot of medical problems. He's at the hospital right now, getting a knee replaced. However, work is progressing. So, you know, a recommendation of the City Commission is to do a review in 30 days just to monitor progress.
Is, is the owner doing the work?
The owner is doing the work, yes.
Well, if he just had-
He's got a new knee.
If he just had his knee removed, I could-
Well, he has two other people that run with him on his business that have been helping him out. So I think overall, all in all, I believe that they're the ones going to come in and continue the repairs.
I'm not sure we need to see it in 30 days, though. I can't imagine there'd be much to see.
I'd be in favor for going.
Say 90 days?
You know, with their health. Yeah.
Okay. Pleased to see they're working on it.
If he just had his knee repaired, it's not going to feel good for 60 days, I can tell you. I haven't been through it. No, I'm good with 60 or 90 days. I don't, if he wants to fix it, can extend it.
Commissioner Hawk said, do you want to make a motion?
Do we need a motion for this one, just to-
Or just table?
Table it for, bring it back for 90 days? Is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Additional items. Item J, consider authorizing selling 921 West Myrtle to Hometown Healthcare.
Yes, Hometown Health has been looking for a location. We've been, I've been trying to assist them, either lease or purchase, and I had told them previously if they were interested in the property to make an offer, and they have made so, an offer today. And I think John Reed's here to address the commission.
Good evening. Hometown Healthcare would like to, we have, we're the agency that acquired Mercy's Home Health and Hospice and has continued to run that operation here in Independence. We have made an offer. We threw out some options of either a lease or a purchase of 921, the lot and the building there, and would like the, the commission to consider allowing us, like, say, or a combination. We are, if we could lease even for a year as-is and then purchase at the end of that year, we would be good with that. But however the commission wants to handle this, I know that sometimes it's better just to get it done, but we definitely want to stay here. Mr. Webb has been very courteous in showing us the building. It's about the same size of our current office that we are in that's slated for demolition, so we think we'll fit in very well there and still be in, in the general vicinity of the other offices.
And what's the offer?
$50,000.
Is the X-ray equipment still in it?
Still in.
And as-is means you deal with the X-ray equipment, too, disposal?
Now, I, was the understanding when Debbie spoke the other day that the X-ray equipment would be removed? That might be, I mean, we need to check on that.
My understanding is Mercy's willing to remove it, but-
Okay.
It is what it is right now.
Okay, all right. We would have to look at that. The only thing that we would want to, being as how we have done a courtesy look on it, is we would like to have a building inspection done to make sure that there's nothing that we didn't see, just by courtesy look.
I'm sure it's in perfect condition. No reason for inspections.
No, no worry, huh?
Well, then, do you want, before we consider the offer, do you want to have your inspection and then bring it back?
We could do that. We could do that. I just wanted to know, I mean, is the council, I mean, does this look favorable that you would consider this, or...
Are we willing to sell it for fifty based on their inspector approving the deal?
What's... Did anyone look at the value of the...
Yeah, it's eighty-nine, seven fifty from the county records. That's what they value it at. The, we haven't had an appraisal, but I would guess that it'd praise for more than that. However, this company is trying to provide health services to the community, and I think that should be kept in mind on the offer. And I think I would recommend that we work with them to sell it to them.
If... We need to find out with the x-ray equipment, if we have to deal with it, or if Mercy's going to deal with it, or if they're going to deal with it, that's...
Yeah, the as-is of the fifty, I would recommend that we let them deal, make sure that they get it out, not on us. If they, if we sell it for fifty, it would be up to them to deal with Mercy.
Okay.
You did say as-is, right?
We did.
New carpet, painting?
It has some improvement work that needs to be done before it's moved in ready.
Yeah, we had it a...
It's been sitting a while, I know.
We had an estimate of thirty-five thousand to do what they needed done to the building. Also, on the other, the lab area where we're looking at for them, a twenty-seven thousand. So I think to provide that service, if we give them a favorable price, I think it would be to the whole community's advantage.
I'm good with it. We need to provide healthcare.
Yeah, I'd love to have them here.
Yeah.
I don't want to be in the rental property business.
Doesn't work.
They might get a little more for it, but frankly, I can't imagine getting all that much more.
Yeah, the commission had instructed me last week to list it. However, I was waiting to see what Mr. Reed and Home Health was going to do.
So they've had an interest in it?
Yes.
All along. Well, and I think you're right. I think we probably could get a few more bucks for it.
Well, not by the time if we just do minimum painting, you know, we're...
Yep, we're in eighty...
We're still...
Yeah.
Still looking at sixty, sixty-five.
Your offer to lease it isn't as-is, is it?
We would. We would, if, as a small company and a young company, it would work better for us. That way, we could fix it up as we're there. But if the, you know, as council doesn't want to get into the lease or the rental business, we would also just go ahead and make the purchases. Like I say, I know the combination would probably work better for us, but we could make it happen.
I'd say let's sell it.
I say let's just move forward.
It's a fair price.
It's a done deal.
We'd love to have them right there.
Keep you in town, it's jobs and...
Sounds good to us.
Yeah.
So... X-ray equipment as-is includes x-ray...
You guys keep worrying me when you keep talking about that.
It's our job.
Yeah. Yeah, just, we'll work the misunderstandings out now, not later.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, is there something I need to know about the x-ray equipment?
It's radioactive.
It's heavy.
It's heavy. I knew that. So...
Yeah. It's heavy, and we just don't want to mess with it.
Okay. All right. I can deal with heavy. If there's any disposal cost or anything like that, that would be something I'd be concerned of, but no.
And you said Mercy has...
It's my understanding that they were going to remove it. But, and I certainly won't mind talking to their officials, but I do need to make that the fifty thousand is subject to them actually getting it done.
Right.
Or whatever extra cost.
But you did say subject to an inspection, so...
Yeah, we would like to have it inspected. As I say, as a courtesy search or look at the building, you know, we didn't get into everything, so...
So we can approve the deal subject to their inspection?
Okay. Yeah, if that comes out well, we would like to move forward as quickly as possible. We are under a time crunch. We have to be out of our current building by February twenty-eighth, and we have a little bit of remodeling.
Oh, wow. Got to go, huh?
Yes, sir.
Let's do it.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion regarding it.
So let's see. I move that we approve the offer for fifty thousand dollars for nine twenty-one West Myrtle to Hometown Healthcare.
Pending an inspection?
Okay.
As-is.
And...
As-is. Good point.
As-is pending inspection. Jeff, you were...
Well, no real estate deals binding unless it's derived inside of the project, so maybe it should be included in a motion that authorize the signing of a standard contract for fifty thousand as-is with addressing the x-ray inspection.
You get all that, Jen?
I think so.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. A second.
So I have a motion and a second to authorize the signing of a contract to sell for fifty thousand dollars nine twenty-one West Myrtle to Hometown Healthcare as-is pending an inspection.
Sounds good.
Including x-ray equipment.
Do you want me to add including?
We need to address something either as-is with the x-ray equipment or deal with Mercy is going to remove it. I think as-is with the x-ray equipment, and then Mickey can work...
So as-is including x-ray?
Mercy to get rid of it for you.
So I have a motion and a second to authorize the signing of a contract to sell nine twenty-one West Myrtle to Hometown Healthcare as-is, including x-ray equipment for fifty thousand dollars pending an inspection.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pleasure doing business with you.
Item K, consider an agreement with Mercy regarding demolition of portions of property donated at eight hundred West Myrtle.
How do we start on this one?
Yeah.
More than a sentence, huh?
Well, I could take periods out.
We, I'll start it for you.
Well...
We sent the language to Mercy. They sent us back the redline version that appears on the screen. They pretty much appeared to it, of course, having dealt with Mercy over the last eight months. They're going to do something to it, and that's what they did. And my last conversation with Leonard, he didn't like what they did to it, and he's not okay with it. So need further direction on how to proceed.
So Jeff, does this protect the city as per our discussion at the last meeting adequately? I mean, because from what I saw, it looked like they incorporated most everything that was in the three or four paragraphs that were...
Well, having drafted things for a living for thirty-five years, everybody drafts things differently, and everybody's comfort level of how things are drafted is different. And so we're dealing with that. We're also dealing with a situation where these contracts already exist. At the time, we acquired ownership of the property, and it's kind of hard for us as a new owner to go in and tell everybody that's already signed contracts, you've got to change it. I made some investigation. I was satisfied that when I talked to the architect, that the concerns expressed were addressed in the existing contract documents. I'm okay with that, but like I say, everybody's comfort level's a little different on these things.
So it looks like they got ninety percent of it in there. Am I seeing that right?
The changes that I questioned, and I think I said in my email, where it's got in accordance with the plans and specifications, is, are tied to those. All we are concerned about, there's really two issues. One, the city and Mercy, and the other is Mercy and their consultants and contractors.
Correct.
We should be concerned about the condition of the building after the contractors are done. I don't care about means and methods, how they get it done. I'm just concerned what were left in the building. So when you tie in accordance with the plans and specifications, we're acknowledging that we're approving the plans and specifications that we have nothing to do with. That's Mercy's job to get the plans and specifications set out to do the work. It's not ours. All we want is in the end that the building be in a certain condition. Kind of these are, what I see, our point is a performance spec. We don't want to tell them how to build the wall, but we want the wall waterproof and windproof when it's done. Don't care what they use to make it with, but we want it in the end so that it doesn't leak or doesn't cause us problems. So us tying ourself to their plans and specs, that shouldn't be in there. The last part was, the last sentence, they had the existing contracts and the JE Dunn contract require the work to be performed in compliance with all applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances, including environmental laws. Again, I don't care how they do it. I just want to know when the work is done, that there's no hazardous waste there, that there wasn't an oops and it gets covered up, and then it comes back on us. We shouldn't deal with their contractors and their consultants on any problem. So our contract shouldn't tie us to any of them. So maybe JE Dunn is going to do it all right, but all we want to know is that at the end of the work, there's not a problem for us. It's simple. They're saying it's done. They're saying it's in the plans and specs.
Sure.
Well, then just don't tie us to your work. Tie us to an agreement that says when we're done, your building's going to be okay. Your property where we've raised the buildings is going to be clean. There's not going to be a problem. You know, it's simple. And, but when you tie us to that, we're becoming connected with their consultants that we have no control over. They've already stated we can't make a change order with them, which is right. We don't want to. We don't want to tell them how to do the work. We don't want involved in their scheduling. All we want at the end is the building properly sealed and all the hazardous waste removed.
So the final, the final sentence there in red was your sentence?
Yeah.
Okay. And they had an exception, took exception to that and put in their own sentence there above it?
Yeah.
Saying we're already taking care of this in our contract with JE Dunn.
Yeah, and that's, that's fine, but I don't want to be tied to JE Dunn's contract. I just want them to say, yeah, when we walk away, there's not going to be any hazardous waste on site.
So is that the main issue? I mean, some of the others, it's clear, like they crossed out Sean Clapp's name and put Heckman and Associates.
Yeah, I didn't even, I don't have a problem because they're, with that paragraph, they're just telling us what they're doing.
Right.
But the, the long sentence from that first paragraph to the bottom is what I put.
The black type.
Yeah.
Well, since I can't vote on this one, we got to make you happy. So...
Jeff, in your discussions with them, I mean, they struck that out and put that other paragraph, or that other sentence in there, is that... I mean, some of this gets into the legalese part of it.
You're talking about the last two paragraphs, the one in blue and the one in red?
Yes.
Well, to me, it's six of one, half of another. The language they struck says free of all materials deemed environmentally hazardous. The language they added says that the work will be performed in compliance with all environmental laws, which requires that all materials be removed or... So it's, you know, I think it says the same. It's not worded the same, but I think it means the same thing.
Then they could change it back to the way we had it, and they'd be fine. If we're saying the same thing, then just adopt it as way I put it.
I look at it, trying to be in the middle of two immovable objects at this point.
I'll talk to her, you know, if you want. Want to have a conference call?
Yeah, I don't know that it would be good, because she actually, we're talking about Ms. Brown, refers it to the construction lawyers that drafted it. I don't know who that is.
Yeah, and I can understand why they don't, because they're trying to protect themselves. They know that if there is an accident or they miss something, that they will be responsible for it. That's why I just want it in there, so that if something happens and a labor spills something or doesn't get some asbestos taken off of a pipe, clear to the source that they should have, that it's not ours, that we've got to hire an abatement contractor to come in, or we have to deal with their contractors.
Well, I think we have enforcement privileges. I mean, with this version, if something like that happened, we could enforce it. Against them and their contractor. We probably would be construed as what they call a third-party beneficiary as to the contract between Mercy and their contractor.
Leave her sentence and then put at the end so that the site is free of all hazardous, environmental hazardous materials. Just, I don't have a copy of it with me. After environmental laws put so that at the completion of all demolition work to raise structure scheduled, the site shall be free of all materials deemed environmentally hazardous.
All right, I'll communicate that too.
And, but the reference according with the plans and specifications strike that.
In the second paragraph, third line?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, another, I didn't bring, but the operate, where she's got the completion of the project, Building D will operate properly for the remaining structures. I had balanced and calibrated. We need to make sure that the equipment, you can't just cut off the flow without, we don't know how it's set up. So your pumps are set to flow certain rates to cool, and if they're branched, we want to make sure that when you remove the load from the other building, if it's tied into pumps that are staying, that those pumps are operating at the right capacity. If there's separate pumps running those buildings that are removed, then there's not a problem. But if, if you size, in water systems, you work on not only temperature, but the flow rate gallons per minute. And if you take off the load, now how's that going to affect the remaining part? So that's what I, operate properly is kind of a broad, a broad term.
I think in this situation, broad is better than specific, because broad would encompass more.
Well, I bought a sixty-five Mustang, and it was from a preacher, so you could believe it. Said that the transmission he just had it worked on, and it went out in a week. So worked on to be taking the plate off and putting it back on. I learned. Maybe just put, maybe instead of listen, calibrated, balancing, put certified to operate properly. So then they'll have to have their mechanical contractor look at it, and not just the demolition. We're talking pretty sophisticated systems.
You want them to sign off on it, basically?
Right.
John Heckman, since you're sitting in here, sorry to pick on you, but do you know if any of that's...
I mean, we've got a, we've got a MEP engineer involved, PCs, and all this. They're, they're going from a pneumatic control system to a digital control system.
Wow.
There's two chillers, there's two boilers. It only takes half of it to run the building. It's going to be fine, but if we're going to split hairs, then split hairs, I guess, but...
No, I'm just looking at, at the... No, I'm, I'm just looking at, at the city that we have to get.
I guess I agree with Jeff, the broader, it's like this last statement, you can't get any broader than applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances, and environmental laws. That covers it all. Why do you have, you know, I don't, I just, I don't understand.
Yeah, because you're working for Mercy.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
And for Mercy, I work for the city to go, I'm interested in the community. We're trying to do a good job. And I mean, Mercy has hired, you know, PEC to handle all of the structural, all the environmental, engineering. It's, it's, it's taken care of. I, I just, you know, I don't want to, we need to continue forward, you know? And I, I guess I don't, I don't quite, I'm not understanding the problems. Because I, and maybe because I'm involved so much, I know that they're making sure everything's going to be done correctly. So that's, I mean, that's, that's not how, I mean, I, I, we do work to do it right, so that's, that's the intent. That's all I can say.
So if you want to make those, contact them. Any other discussion on item K? We have noted an executive session. Is there an executive session today?
Did we need a motion on the agreement, since we're amending it? Jeff, do we need a motion, or are we good?
No, we're still under the motion that was made last week, I think.
We are, okay, thank you.
The one-sentence motion.
Executive session? No executive session.
Mickey, do we need an executive session or anything?
Need about ten minutes on. And then following that, we need one on my evaluation.
Not like the personnel for that.
Probably at least, at least ten minutes.
For, first one's for attorney-client privilege.
We can probably do that in five-minute section.
We'll be back in session at.
This one?
We've got this one too.
Better be ten minutes.
Yeah.
Let's see, six forty. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We go into executive session for attorney-client privilege for ten minutes. Then can we do it in the same motion?
I'm just going to ask, that's eighteen minutes that you just, for six forty, so is it ten minutes or?
Include both, didn't you?
No.
No, just one?
So the attorney-client privilege?
Ten-minute good, or should we do fifteen, just so we don't have to extend?
And going into executive session will be the commission, city attorney, city manager. I don't, I don't know.
My second.
So we're in for ten minutes or fifteen? What do you think?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Six forty.
All right, so return at six forty.
Okay, so we made a motion. We seconded it?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. We're good to go.
Okay.
Now we're ready for the back-in session.
Are we ready? We're going to go to executive session to, for non-elected personnel.
I think you'll be done in ten minutes. We'll probably do longer than that.
Okay, for ten minutes, so.
Six fifty.
What time is yours?
To return at six fifty.
Six fifty. Attending will be the commissioners and city manager. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll call the meeting back in session. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Meyer, do you have any comments?
Nope, not tonight.
Commissioner.
I'm okay. Thank you.
I had, one thing we had, had talked for quite a few years, I think both of you had mentioned in your campaigns about expanding the membership of the commission, looking at either a five or seven man, and maybe, you know, looking at ward representation instead of everything being in the hold. But maybe if we could gather some information on what other communities, how they've expanded, is five enough? Seven too much? Just where we are?
I'd love to know what other cities do.
Yeah.
How many cities in state have five? How many have seven? Because having been on the commission with five, it's so much simpler in a lot of ways.
I visited with one commissioner of a town smaller than us, and they had divided the town into wards or districts even to get a pull from the whole community, help to buy into it, so.
The league probably could help us with that, couldn't they, Mickey, in terms of, you know, there's pros and cons to everything. So we need to be, look at it comprehensively and not.
Okay. Next Wednesday is City Hall Day in Topeka in the league, I think. Wasn't much notice. I've, I've gone the last two years, but I got a couple meetings scheduled for Wednesday, so I don't know.
I'd love to go, but I'm, next week is one of those weeks.
Yeah, that's, one of the, the scheduled events is writing, if I were mayor for students, is it seventh graders?
I believe it was seventh graders, yes.
Yeah, it's really interesting to hear, hear their reports. Then, then I had, there's some confusion. You know, I guess Jeff needs to be here to help with the, last week, we were talking about all, on the property, all the restrictions were removed. But then, you know, Mickey sent us the restrictive covenants that were there, and, you know, Jeff was real clear that in his interpretation or thought that they were just, you know, where, where was it? Because the quick claim deed that we received, you know, didn't have restrictions in it, but the ones that Mickey received were quite extensive with restrictions.
Yes, I was sitting here, I didn't know what to say, because you and the attorney were on agreement. And so I thought, well, maybe I didn't see that right, so I wanted to check it in writing before I brought it up. And sure enough, I guess I should have opened my mouth and told you that that was not correct. I didn't think it was. And there is restrictions, and it will, it will follow the property. If, when we sell the property to this Home Health, those, those restrictions will follow with the property.
Because I, I think restrictive covenants, they form an agreement between us and our binding that they, they do follow. And I think the way it was read, written in the ones that I looked at, it has no death sentence or no expiration date. Did it, they're set for hereafter.
Yeah, there, there is a provision that says when, if Saint John's discontinues service in the area, then they will die. But hopefully, that'd be a long, long death.
So, well, that was the questions I had, so that'll have to basically wait till Jeff's here to answer those. So any other comments from the commissioners? Then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And leave. Sign our papers and leave, right?